I call this meeting of High School District Township 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowicz.
Here.
Mr. LaFever.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mrs. Burke.
Here. Please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. I ask that all present tonight value the procedure and decorum of our meeting and be respectful to all. As a reminder, our meeting is being videotaped. At this time, we'll move on to recognitions. Dr. Cates.
Good evening and welcome to everyone to our boardroom tonight. We have some exceptional student athletes to recognize to begin our meeting. And at this point in the meeting, I'd like to ask Eric Winkowski, our Director of Athletics and Activities, to introduce them to us.
Thank you, Dr. Cates. Board of Education and Dr. Cates, thank you for taking some time tonight to honor some really talented students. Couple directions, students. As your coach introduces you, please walk forward and stand here next to the podium and you'll receive your, after you receive your medal. Additionally, any parents or family members that are here, could you please stand as your student is being recognized so that you can be recognized? Helping me present students tonight are Palatine High School Athletic Director Jerry Dobbs and Schaumburg High School Assistant Principal Michelle Napier and Athletic Director Marty Manning. We'll get started today with Kristin Zilmer. Kristin Zilmer is the second-year Special Education Teacher. She's also the Head Cross Country Coach and Head Track Coach at Schaumburg High School. Kristin is an accomplished athlete herself. She was a two-time All-American in 2013 and 14 in the 3,000-meter steeplechase. And what's really nice about Kristin is although she's in her second year, this is her third time attending a board meeting. So Kristin, why don't you come on forward?
Thank you. Here with her parents, Mike and Laura, is Madison Roscoe. Madison has been a pleasure to coach the past two years. I have watched her grow not only as an athlete but a young lady. She regularly demonstrates Saxon pride on and off the field. After winning a race, you will find Madison handing waters to the others stumbling across the finish line behind her. This cross-country season, Madison won majority of her races. Some of her biggest accomplishments were winning the MSL Championship Race and the Regional Race. She also broke two school records. The first record was our Schaumburg Home Course Record. The prior record was 1822. Madison beat it the first time with a time of 1821. Then, one week later, came back and destroyed her record with a time of 1745. So, almost a 30-second improvement. The second record Madison broke was the fastest three-mile time in Schaumburg history. Madison earned that record by finishing in ninth place at the IHSA State Meet and ran a three-mile time of 1653, making her the fastest female Saxon in school history. Lastly, Madison has already decided to continue her running career into college and has committed to running cross-country and track at the University of Illinois next year. Congratulations, Maddie.
Next, I'd like to introduce Brittany Burman. Brittany, you can come forward. Since 2006, Brittany has been a member of the Social Studies Department at Palatine High School. She has been a swim coach at Palatine High School for 12 years, the last eight as the head coach, head swim coach. Brittany swam collegiately at Lewis University, and she is also a proud graduate of Conan High School.
Today with Jane are her parents, Betsy and Mark. We are very lucky that Jane is only a sophomore, and this is already her second trip down to the IHSA State Final Meet. This is her first time, however, meddling. In swimming, meddling is the top 12, and we have one division, so that means in the state of Illinois, she is eighth in the entire state. She got placed with a time of 4:5933, which broke a 30-year-old school record. Previously, the school record was 501. She also currently holds three school records. And lucky for us, Jane is only a sophomore, and we hope to be attending more board meetings with you in the future.
Each student who prepares for college is familiar with the emphasis placed on standardized college entrance exams, including the American College Test or the ACT, as it is commonly known. The highest composite score a student can earn on the ACT is a score of 36. Statistically, less than one-tenth of 1% of students who take the ACT achieve the highest score. Tonight, we recognize five students in District 211 who have achieved this remarkable accomplishment. Since we began tracking students who have achieved the highest possible score on the ACT about 20 years ago, our students tonight join more than 100 other students in District 211 who have accomplished this outstanding achievement. On behalf of the Board of Education and High School District 211, I would like to congratulate each of you. We have certificates for each student that the Board President, Mrs. Burke, will present you in just a moment. So, once you've been recognized, please come forward to receive your certificate from the Board President. Each student selected a particular faculty member to introduce and describe some of the attributes that characterize each student. Sponsors, please come forward to introduce your student in this order. Fremd High School Mathematics Teacher Chris Grottoni, followed by Fremd High School Social Studies Teacher and Dean of Students Martin Zachariah, Fremd High School English Teacher Jeremy Harrages, Schaumburg High School Studies, Social Studies Teacher Mary Lopez, and Schaumburg High School Science Teacher Tom Letzel. Chris, would you come forward, please?
It is an honor and a pleasure for me to introduce Rose Din to the District 211 Board of Education for scoring a 36 on the ACT. I would like to start by asking Tam and James Din to stand and be recognized. Thank you. I have had the privilege of being Rose's math team coach for four years, as well as her multivariable calculus teacher. In those four years, I have learned that Rose has a true passion for learning. With her leadership and resolve, she has been an anchor for our team events on math team. She was actually recognized at a board meeting two years ago when she helped carry our freshman-sophomore eight-person team to a fourth-place victory at state. And last year, she was one of the captains of our five-person calculator team. Whether in class or on math team, Rose always goes above and beyond when solving problems, and she's always excited to find her own elegant solution to the problem she's working on. I am very proud of Rose for earning a 36 on the ACT, but I'm certainly not surprised. Her high school career has been defined both by her hard work and her success. In addition to being brilliant, I am proud of her kindness, her positive attitude, and her helpful nature. I am confident that her success will continue as she pursues a career in engineering. Rose told me that she hopes to use her engineering knowledge to help bring electricity to people who don't have access to the grid, or to help design medical instruments that can make procedures safer and more efficient. Rose, we're very proud of you and everything you've achieved at Fremd High School, and we're excited to hear of the many great things you're sure to achieve in the future. Congratulations.
It is my privilege tonight to recognize Meyer Popery, a junior at Fremd High School, for his perfect ACT score. He's joined tonight by his parents Lakshmi and Ramana. I've gotten to know Meyer over the last three years as both his AP US History teacher and Congressional Debate Coach. Over that time, I've come to know an individual whose focus is not on perfect outcomes, but instead on perfect process. Meyer's self-reflective is a habit, and he's committed himself to not make the same mistake twice. As a result, when coaches work one-on-one with Meyer, we rarely are working on the same issue. We can tell that he works on some, on specific skills on his own after practice, and the next time we see him, we get to move on to something else. As a member of the debate team executive board, Meyer has been indispensable as a leader on our team. In particular, Meyer has acted as a big brother to many of his younger teammates. Just yesterday at practice, I watched Meyer reassure a novice debater who froze in the middle of a speech, eventually encouraging her enough to try again and complete the speech. Meyer helped rally his teammates, encourage another debater to give her a first speech of the season. And in a moment of tough love, Meyer was honest in his feedback to a JV debater who gave a speech below team standards and made him redo the speech, in part to show the debater that he was capable of doing more. And that was just yesterday. As intense and stressful as AP classes and an activity like debate can sometimes get, Meyer has instead contributed to an interconnected and affirming culture that promotes growth and prods others to recognize their full potential. Meyer's ACT score is simply a manifestation of a character that has made him invaluable in the classroom and on our team. I look forward to the many other forms that character takes on in the years to come. Thank you.
It is my pleasure to recognize Vikas Reddy for his achievement of earning a perfect score on the ACT. He is joined by his father, Shrinivas. I've been lucky enough to teach Vikas for two years, and in that time, I've seen his intellectual abilities reach a masterful level. His essays are insightful, thought-provoking, and scholarly. Vikas has a brilliant mind and seeks knowledge out at every opportunity and has been a valuable member of Fremd's Scholastic Bowl Team. He's a true Renaissance man who enjoys singing, drawing, and painting. He's also innovative with his talents and started a company called Purposeful Artistry, an online store that sells local artwork to support nonprofits. Vikas is an amazing young man who possesses a positive mindset and earns success because of the hard work and merit that he puts in. He's a rare student who will continue to make all that know him proud. Congratulations.
Good evening. I'm grateful for the opportunity to introduce Sarah Shahid and her parents, Samina Rahim and Shahid Ramin. Sometimes, students pleasantly surprise us. However, I've rarely been less surprised than I was when I heard that Sarah achieved a perfect ACT score. Both motivated and bright, Sarah possesses the maturity to approach her education as we wish all students would. She embraces challenges with an intellectual curiosity that has both already clearly led her to success and will allow her to continue her achievement in college. Among her many activities, Sarah is most proud of captaining the speech team. And through her four years, she's seemingly participated in virtually every part of the school as well as the community. Additionally, having immigrated to the United States, she is proud to be the first generation of her family to attend college in the U.S. Avid student of history that she is, Sarah works hard to see the world through two cultural lenses, which has certainly enriched her views. Sarah has grand plans. She plans to major in engineering physics at the University of Illinois at Urbana. I believe that she has the drive and the ability to achieve her lofty goals, and when she does, I will not be the least bit surprised. Congratulations.
Good evening. It is both a pleasure and an honor to be invited here tonight on behalf of Edwin Suresh and his mother, Mrs. Suresh. We are here to honor Edwin and his amazing academic accomplishments. His ability and performance are second to none. Edwin is an amazing student who has left his mark on Schaumburg High School. However, it is his humility that stands out to me more than anything. He is the most gifted, all-around student I have had the pleasure of working with in 23 years. He is diversified and humble in all of his pursuits. It amazes me how he loves to give back to others. He truly embodies the love of learning. He is intrinsically motivated to understand and learn. His passion for learning has led him to co-found a non-for-profit math circle to foster interest in problem-solving and mathematics. It is amazing to watch Edwin work with others. He always finds a way to connect with and help others. I would like to thank his parents, Mr. Joseph and Mrs. Suresh, for the opportunity and honor it has been to work with all three of your children. Edwin, I wish you the best in your future, and I cannot wait to see and hear how you impact our world. Thank you.
Township High School District 211 has a demonstrated commitment to provide students with the best education possible. Our teachers work tirelessly to ensure their knowledge and practices are current and consistent with recent advancements in their professional field in order to deliver students a high-quality education. Tonight, we will recognize two District 211 teachers in particular who recently received state awards for their professional accomplishments as educators. The first is Conan High School Applied Technology Teacher Shayna Adelman. Shayna, please come forward and stand next to the podium to be recognized. Every year, the Technology Education Association of Illinois recognizes one outstanding teacher as its New Teacher of the Year. According to the association, this award acknowledges a teacher with less than five years of experience who provides students with the most current curriculum available while staying professionally active to continue professional growth. Conan High School Teacher Shayna Adelman is this year's recipient. Shayna has been a part of the Applied Technology Department at Conan High School since 2014 and works closely with students in both the Robotics Club and the Girls in Engineering, Mathematics, and Science Program, known as GEMS. This award serves as a testament to Shayna's dedication to her students and the promotion of women in the fields of science and engineering. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations Shayna. Please come forward to accept this certificate for a well-deserved award. Next, we have Hoffman Estates High School Science Teacher Tanya Katovich. The Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science is the highest award for any educator in the science and mathematics field. Each year, five nominees are selected from every state to be evaluated by a National Review Committee. Tanya is one of this year's nominees representing Illinois. Tanya is a graduate of Fremd High School, where she studied under a previous Presidential Awardee and Fremd High School Science Teacher Bob Grimm. Tanya returned to District 211 as a chemistry teacher, first at Schaumburg High School, before moving to her current position at Hoffman Estates High School. For more than 20 years, Tanya has worked to ensure she utilizes the latest teaching models and has focused on teaching her students through applied, hands-on practices. On behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations, Tanya. Please accept this certificate in recognition of your outstanding honor and award.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to congratulate all the students and staff here this evening on their accomplishments. We will take a 10-minute break to allow for photographs, and then we will begin our business portion of the meeting. Once again, congratulations. Again, we will begin our business portion of our meeting with citizens' appearances and presentation. I have a list of people who have signed up to speak at tonight's meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign the yellow sheet to speak on any other topic other than the levy? We will go ahead and begin. Thank you, Mr. Katney. I said, "thank you." As a large number of people wish to speak, we will allow a period of three minutes for each speaker to address the board. We are pleased to listen to all your comments this evening. It is important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so board members will not be answering questions or responding to your comments. As a reminder, this board meeting is being videotaped. We ask that you value the procedure and decorum of our meeting and be respectful to those at the podium so they may be heard. Foremost, we are here in service to students, and we expect that your comments should remain respectful. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We will provide you with a reminder when you have one minute remaining. Thank you. Mr. Alban?
Hi. It's been a while since I last spoke in front of the board or with any of you individually. And the last time that I spoke, I wanted to talk about the same subject that I want to talk about now, which is communication or lack of communication from the board, from the district, to the people in the district. I'm here tonight basically because most of the information that I have heard has been secondhand. The board does an absolutely terrible job of getting the message out as to why you believe in a certain stance, whatever that is, on a certain subject, and why you do the actions that you do. So, I guess the number-one thing that I'm confused about is that a couple of years ago, we had an issue with, lack of a better term, gender. And we still have issues with gender now, a couple of years later. And it was hard to discern exactly why the board took positions that it did at that time and why you're taking the positions that you do now at this time. Speaking as a taxpayer, as a resident, as a citizen, as the grandfather of somebody in the school district, I would like to have a better idea of, let's just say, better communication from you as to why you're doing what you're doing. So, I don't understand why the issues are as complicated, as complex as they are. I do understand that we had an administration change in Washington. I believe, this is again my opinion...
Sir, you have one more minute?
Thank you. I believe that you guys were reacting to rules at that time, the last time we got together and talked about gender. And we know that those rules are changing. We know that they continue to change. And I would certainly like to have an idea of where you guys stand, why you stand the way you do, what you intend to do, and most importantly, the goals of the administration. What is the end game here? What is your strategy for the next five years? We go so far each time we get together and discuss this, but what is the long-range view? Because I take a look at lawsuits that are going on, for example. We're paying for that, the collective community, we're paying for that. And where does this go if rules change and all of a sudden we get lawsuits from now, the other side, one side, both sides?
Sir, that is the end of your time.
What is the end game? Please communicate better. Thank you.
Thank you. Gera Goldstein?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gera Goldstein. I use she/her pronouns. Thank you so much for allowing this public comment section here in District 211. I've come basically to say thank you. Thank you to the school board. Thank you to the community. This is an opportunity for us to come together as a community and work together as a community instead of seeing how we are so different. I think that the school board here has done an excellent job of explaining how we are not different. I am incredibly grateful that in District 211, you start your board meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. These are not just words. They are actually indeed a pledge. And for every person in this room tonight that stood and said those words, you have made a pledge. And in that pledge, you use the word "indivisible." There can be no separation within indivisibility, whether we're talking about locker rooms or whether we're talking about mathematics. And ultimately, we are talking about equality, which is a mathematic equation. It either exists, or it doesn't. I have watched District 211 grow and expand and learn and cater to the needs of all students. We, tonight, are going to hear a tremendous amount. But all of us need to be aware that there is a difference between opinion and experience. My experience is that I am a transgender person. There are students in your district that identify the same way. They are telling you their experience, not their opinion, their experience. And you have been excellent...
You have one minute remaining?
...at responding to the needs of those students based on their experiences. I encourage you to continue to do that work, regardless of others' opinions. Listen to the voices of the students. Appreciate and celebrate who those students are, like you did this evening as we started. District 211 is a beautiful district. You are doing the right work. I commend you as a transgender person and hopefully can speak for students in this district that might not feel what you intend to say. And as board members, as elected officials, you should stand up and say to them, "We see you. We stand by you, and we will protect you from this day and every day moving forward." That's why you were elected. Thank you.
Thank you. Art Ellingson?
My name is Art Ellingson. I addressed this group two years ago this month, twice, in fact, on this very same topic. And what I said then, I'll repeat today. This is not about doing something special for one young man who tells us he's a girl. We live in a world that is directed by facts. There's DNA that says what the facts of a case are. I read last week about a 17-year victim, 17 years in jail, wrongly convicted of rape, who was released after DNA evidence revealed he didn't do it. We have a club here at the school, which I didn't know about till tonight, called the Girls of the Gems, Girls Engineering, Mathematics, and Science Club. I don't have a problem with that club, but it's a girls' club. And if, having everything equal, why do you have a girls' club of anything? This is about not protecting the boy, it's about protecting the 900 girls who don't want to take showers with a boy. When the Navy decided to experiment with women on the ship, they allowed 400 women, about 1990, to board an aircraft carrier. Aircraft carrier was big enough, they had separate facilities for birthing, sleeping quarters, separate facilities for toilets and showers. And even though everything was separate, and even though those 11, correction, those 400 women were at sea for 11 months, this aircraft carrier was nuclear-powered, it never once pulled into a foreign port. It was at sea for 11 months. Now, I don't have to remind you the mathematics of human...
Sir, you have one more minute?
...production, that it takes nine months to be a baby. Guess how many of those women were pregnant when the ship pulled back into port at Norfolk, Virginia? 10%. Forty of the 400 women who had to have gotten pregnant on the ship because the ship had been at sea for 11 months. If we want to protect young women, and when I was here two years ago, there were dozens of 14-year-old girls in tears who were embarrassed but still talked about this subject because they didn't want to take showers with boys in the locker room. And the DNA evidence says this person in question is a boy. Those are the facts, and you can't change the facts, and you can't change the gender. Until you show me a person who changes his gender and says, "I was born a boy, and now I've given..." I've given birth to a baby," or vice versa, you're not going to convince me. Because God said He made them in the beginning, male and female.
Sir, that's the end of your time.
And we're still male and female, and there are no other genders. There are no other sexes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ralph Bonatz?
Is it, is it possible for somebody who's signed up to speak to yield time? I have a prepared statement that I spent quite a bit of time preparing, and I did it within the five-minute limit that I thought I would have coming to the meeting. And I'm being asked somehow to take that and cut it in half. And, you know, I spent a lot of time preparing this. Is that, is that acceptable to the board, to allow somebody to yield their time to me?
To be clear, Mr. Bonatz, that I will be able to take one or two people off the list and allow you to speak? I just want to be clear before I make a decision. And it, what? No. We gave opportunity multiple times to sign up on the sheet and add. But if I can remove, and I will do that, but I will not exceed five minutes. So, and what is your name, please? Okay, Ms. Isaac, I have you speaking on the levy. That does not count because we have a separate hearing for the levy. Levy conversation is on its own hearing tonight. So gender conversation is on this one. Are you on both?
I'm on the levy.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chau. I'm okay with that if the rest of the board is okay with that? Okay.
Good, thank you. Hello, my name is Ralph Bonatz. I've been a district resident for nineteen years and have two children at Schaumburg High School. I'm here to address the Board of Education and the Superintendent about the latest lawsuit and to comment on a message sent out by the Superintendent, Dr. Daniel Kates, dated December first, 2017, regarding the lawsuit. I appreciate this opportunity. With regard to the lawsuit, I want to urge all of you not to settle out of court or give any demands of this male student. Please contest this with all the fervor and determination you can muster. The board is on solid ground. Further erosion of the privacy rights of D-211 students is at stake and would be unacceptable. The access to girls' locker rooms and restrooms already offered to this male student is a huge overstep that creates an uncomfortable and unwelcome environment in private spaces for students. Also, let's remind ourselves, these are minors we are talking about here. I don't want my daughter at risk of being intentionally or accidentally exposed to a penis or fully unclothed male in her high school locker room. Do you? No risk of this happening, you say? How so, I say? If you were to allow a biological male to change right alongside her in the girls' locker room, this would basically be sanctioning indecent exposure and leaving the district open to yet more lawsuits. The other side says it's an extreme position to force this boy with gender dysphoria into the boys' locker room. I say it is even more extreme to say, for the same boy to force his way into the girls' locker room, even if it's to change in a private area within the locker room. What about considering the modesty, mental health, and heightened sensitivities of all the girls in the locker room, especially as they are progressing through puberty and some are undoubtedly dealing with their own serious issues like sexual abuse survivors? Privacy begins at the locker room and restroom doors, that much should be obvious. All D-211 staff share in the responsibility of guarding the safety, dignity, and emotional well-being of every student in D-211 schools. Give staff the backing they need to do so by fighting and winning this legal action. With regard to your message, Superintendent Kates, there were some statements I found very upsetting and naive. For example, you said, "Our staff members and students recognize, respect, and celebrate the complete range of unique and marvelous human differences, many of which are best served through supportive accommodations," end quote. You then reinforced this thought later in your message when you stated, quote, "The students and staff members in our schools are not divided on this issue," end quote. While I have no problem providing reasonable and supportive accommodations to students with special request or needs, current arrangements are in no way reasonable and appear to be all too one-sided. It is outrageous to think that girls are subject to being seen partially or fully undressed in their locker room by a male student. What shocks me most is your assertion that all staff members and students recognize, respect, and celebrate the conditions at issue here. Worse than just being presumptuous, your notion is completely and verifiably false. Do you honestly believe that you can ascribe this position to all the staff and students in D-211? Of course you can't. There are many staff and students that don't feel this way. Just within my circle of acquaintances and friends within Schaumburg High School, there are many students and staff who disagree with how D-211 goes about accommodating students who identify as the opposite sex. What about the pending lawsuit against the district brought by over fifty D-211 families who are vehement, who are in vehement disagreement with what the district is currently doing? To all D-211 staff, I say this. Are you comfortable with Superintendent Kates characterizing your position in such absolute and strong terms? Even he acknowledges in his message that still, quote, "Still today, these matters divide communities across the nation," end quote. Our community is no different. Unanimity does not exist here. In fact, many informal, in fact, my informal canvassing of the district employees and residents indicates more people are united against current district practices than for them. D-211 staff who oppose what is happening, we need-
Bonatz, you have one more minute.
-we need you now more than ever to be bold and make your true feelings known to your colleges and the administration. Surely you understand that silence implies consent. Do not succumb to these extreme measures being pushed by the radical trans ideology crowd. Don't buy into junk science behind this movement. If you apply some critical thinking to their ideas, you quickly see just how faulty and dangerous they are. You know that biological sex is not based on feelings. It is determined by your chromosomes and indicated by anatomical features. You know that a person can never truly change their gender. Don't take part in aiding and affirming this charade. This only ends up hurting gender-confused and/or stressed students rather than helping them cope with reality. I entreat you to consider other implications of the direction our district and the state are heading. For instance, how about the impacts to girls' high school sports programs? In some states, we've seen biological boys participating on girls' sports teams. A biological male was allowed to participate in Alaska's Girls State Track and Field Championships, where he took places away from deserving girls in the hundred and two-hundred meter finals. At the Texas-
Please wrap it up, Mr. Bonatz.
At the Texas Girls State Wrestling Championship, a male participated and won the corresponding weight class title, completing-
I'm going to give you two more seconds because you've exceeded your time.
Fifty-six and undefeated.
Mr. Bonatz, you've exceeded your time that you asked for extra time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I would appreciate when we ask for leniency on the comments and the board gives the leniency, that we respect the leniencies. Mrs. Wilson?
Good evening. So regarding the newest lawsuit, I just want to make it clear what's not really being reported correctly in the media. What it's really about are two things. One, eliminating all differences between boys with gender dysphoria and biological girls. They want to erase all lines between those. And this is about money, which the media is not really reporting. The district has bent over backwards for this student, and yet that's not enough. They're still coming after for a financial settlement. There is a video that I'm going to email you that I ask you to watch. It's by a transgender, an adult transgender named Raya, who agrees one hundred percent with Parents for Privacy's stance of accommodate, don't violate. Now regarding our, the experiences, all children's experiences matter. Now, we've collected statements from students just yesterday and today. So this is just in process. This is just a very small sample of how students feel on this issue. And I found it also very disconcerting and arrogant of Dr. Kates to say that the community is not divided on this. Did you forget about the girls who had addressed the board previously? Did you forget about all the girls in our lawsuit? It is an extreme position that you currently have. The limited access is an extreme position to allow boys, even boys who wish they were born girls, to walk through the locker room while girls are getting undressed. That is not a compromise. The compromise is to say, "We understand you're not comfortable over here, we get it, and we want to take care of you, but we need to take care of everyone equally." The compromise is accommodate but don't violate. So I'm just going to start reading some of these statements until I run out of time. Senior Framed High School. Even though the school went out, this is referring to student A, even the school went out of their way to accommodate the student with privacy areas in the locker room, they chose to change in the open area. That's what happens when you do limited access. This person chose a locker directly next to mine, and it made me extremely uncomfortable. This person was obnoxious and invasive of my privacy, so much so that I was, I went to go change in the bathroom stalls multiple times. I was appalled that I was forced to give up my right of privacy. Freshman Palatine High School. I'm a freshman at Palatine. When I am changing for gym, I would not feel comfortable having someone who is biologically male changing next to me or even close by. Whether or not someone feels they are female, the reason we separate males and females in locker rooms and bathrooms is the same. It's not about labels, it's about anatomy and the body parts you are born with. Another freshman at Palatine.
Thank you. You can leave it with Mr. Kovak, and he'll make sure we get it. Mrs. Wilson? You can leave it right here, I'll make sure the rest get it. Please put down the papers. I'll distribute at the end of the meeting. Sarah Harrington, please.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Harrington. I'm in tenth grade. Today I want to address the board about an issue that has been very controversial in our community for over two years. This topic is, should members of the opposite sex be allowed to use showers, locker rooms, and restrooms that they identify with? The answer is no. High school boys don't belong in girls' locker rooms, shower areas, and restrooms. It's common sense. By forcing students to do this, it violates their privacy. Many people also wonder about accommodations for students who are struggling with gender identity. I think that schools should seek compassionate solutions like offering special changing areas for those struggling with their gender identity that respect the interests of all students. It's been over two years. You, as a school district, have been denying a basic idea to all of your students, which is being able to use the showers, locker rooms, and restrooms without wondering if the opposite sex isn't there. This has been going on for too long. There has been no change. As time continues, more students are being denied this basic idea. The school district is just digging a hole for itself that is only getting deeper. I encourage the school district to restore privacy. It's not too late to start protecting the privacy, dignity, and well-being of every student in District 211. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Skoroski, I apologize.
Score.
Score, thank you.
Score. Skorski.
Skorski, I'm sorry.
She has, Paul's name you'll run across, but we'll give you a pass because you're an educator.
I'm actually not, I'm just a resident.
Just a resident? Well, then you're equal to me versus the other people who are above me. You know my name? Two years ago, I was here with my friends, and I warned this board about the insanity of what you were doing. Guess what? We were right, you were wrong. I hope you're happy. Three hundred and twenty-five years ago, we had a problem in this country. It's called the Salem Witch Trials. Twenty people were hanged. Fourteen were women. We currently have a final retribution going on in Congress. Our number-one hot topic is what? Sexual harassment. What the hell does that mean? Means a boy improperly touches a woman or a woman improperly touches a man. That's what's going on if you haven't read the damn newspaper. I'm appalled at what's going on in this school. I was reminded about how much fun high school was, the first part of your meeting. You guys should have that at the end so those poor kids would see what you're doing and how abusive you are to them. Fourteen eighteen-year-old children, as I believe, are still wards of their parents. When a divorce occurs, I believe someone gets custody. What does custody mean? Control of. Why does the court system feel that someone needs control of a fourteen-year-old? A thirteen-year-old? A fifteen-year-old? Why? Because common sense dictates it is right. I warned you guys two years ago, I said you got a madman, a Muslim in the White House named Obama. I warned you the guy wanted to fundamentally change America. You disagreed. You were intimidated. You thought, "Oh, my God, he's going to take away my Fed funds. Oh, my God, I need my Fed funds. Don't let him take my five million Fed funds." And I says, "Come on, you bedwetters, don't worry about it. They can't take it away. Trump can't take away Fed funds for sanctuary cities." Now Trump has your back. Stand up. You got a man behind you, not a woman like that last guy that was in there. And thank God we didn't get Hillary, or you guys wouldn't even be, I don't even want to go there. The bottom line is you got common sense, or I hope you do. The policy must be fair to everyone. We had an election in Alabama. The majority rules, whether it's a half a percent or two percent. When ninety-eight percent said a man has certain anatomical features and a woman, a different bunch. Until such time as that guy is fixed or that woman is fixed, they belong in the John of their God-given right. And whether they think they're a-
Sir, that's the end of your time.
Whether they think they're a transgender-
Thank you, that's the conclusion of your time.
An Indian or whatever.
Sir, your time has expired.
I hear what you're saying. I mean, that's an earthy-
Then, please, excuse me.
That's an earthy.
Excuse me, I would like him removed from our meeting for disruption, foul language. We will take a break until the gentleman is escorted out of the building. Again, we'd like him escorted out of the room, and we'd like it done now, please. Again, I have asked over and over again that we have no issues with anyone's point of views or positions. Where we take issue is when we're rude, disrespectful, as well as just flat-out inappropriate. So if we cannot continue, I will stop. So we've had three in a row of inappropriate behavior. Let's see if we can fix that. No. Well, that's three, it's been on the website, we have the latitude, and the rationale is the number of. And given the way we've been behaving, it makes sense. Voices can be heard in a respectful manner. Again, we yield his time, he took abuse of the time, and we asked him to stop. And I will ask you to leave if you continue to have an outburst during my meeting. Okay, we will take another recess till the crowd can get under control. If you'd like to have conversation, I'd invite you to the atrium because I would like to continue on with public comments. Thank you. And I apologize, I can't always read all the handwriting on here. We have a Jennifer Grosshandler.
Good evening. My, that's going to be an interesting act to follow, but I'm going to try to do it. I'm Jennifer Grosshandler. I'm a parent of four. We live in a neighboring community. We have very dear friends, actually, who live here in Palatine, and they love sending their children to high school here. And by the looks of the remarkable young people who won those awards tonight, it's very clear why they feel that way. We are the parents of four, including an eleven-year-old transgender daughter. And what I wanted to share with you very quickly and the audience is that our districts, District 112 and 113, that represents nine thousand students, is part of a broader group of more than five hundred and fifty thousand students now in the state of Illinois. Students who come from all sorts of backgrounds, who represent all sorts of faith, and who bring very different experiences and value to the learning and- bring very different experiences and value to the learning environment. So in our district, right, we have a number of elementary, middle, and high schools. So K through 12, we have policies in place. And it's so interesting because the children have a wonderful, calm, smooth sailing time going about their days, learning, entering the locker rooms, going to the restrooms, having their lunches, and competing in sports, also excelling in academics. That's what we try to instill in them, just like y'all do here. And it's fascinating because there is not an issue. There's just not an issue. And our districts are joined by newer districts from Evanston to Berwin to Harlem to Chicago Public Schools, just a stone's throw away from here. So all I can share with you is, one, I'm incredibly proud of you.
One minute left.
Thank you. I'm incredibly proud of you. I'm proud that you are standing up for the fundamental civil rights of all folks. I am proud that not only our state has watched you and has celebrated you, but the country has watched you and the country is celebrating you. So I appreciate the time tonight and rock on and just know that you are incredibly supported and appreciated from folks that you'll probably never meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeanette Ward.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jeanette Ward and I am a Board of Education member in School District U46, the largest elected school district in the state. My views are my own and do not reflect the views of the U46 Board of Education. However, since I am a Board of Education member, I have a keen interest in this case and I encourage the board to consider carefully the implications of its actions concerning the objectively male student who is demanding access to the girls' locker room at Palatine High School. In the interest of the privacy, well-being, and safety of all students in Illinois and across the country, I urge this board not to capitulate to his demands. It is duly noted that student A, also a biological male, demanded access to the girls' locker rooms at Fremd High School last year and was granted access with the use of a privacy curtain. I strongly disagree with such a policy since the privacy and safety of children should be protected at all times and privacy begins at the locker room door. Either objective biological sex matters or it doesn't. If it has no meaning, then there remains no logical reason to have any sex segregated locker rooms at all. In the current case, the student has been offered the same accommodation, but that is not even enough for him. It is also duly noted that this fact is severely misrepresented in the current legal complaint. If this student really valued privacy, as stated in the lawsuit, the student would not attempt to force himself into the girls' locker room. This is characteristic of those on that side of the ideological debate.
Ms. Ward, you have one more minute.
They continually push for incremental change until all rational distinctions are erased and we descend into sexual and societal anarchy. I urge this board in the strongest possible terms not to capitulate to this science and reality-denying ideology. If you do, it will open the door for the violation of the privacy of women, men, and children throughout Illinois schools and across the country. A society that will not recognize the reality and profound meaning of biological sex and protect the privacy and safety, particularly of women and children, is headed for utter chaos. The distinction between men and women, boys and girls, is self-evident and is solid ground on which to stand. Please take a stand and do not allow this deconstruction to continue.
Anthony Galloway.
My name is Anthony Galloway. I'm with Equality Illinois and I have to say I'm very sad and heartbroken by some of the comments I've heard tonight. I haven't been this emotional in a long time. We're talking about kids here. We're talking about children, we're talking about students. We're not talking about adult men like me that can take horrible comments, but we're talking about young people. And I want to say thank you to the board for being inclusive of all students. Transgender students deserve their rights, although they are not the majority. It is our responsibility, as people are privileged, to protect those who are marginalized, even if the marginalized does not have the numbers behind them. And I want to say thank you to that. District 211 is on the correct track. The students recognized tonight are a golden example of that. And I encourage you to continue to listen with an open heart, with an open mind, and make sure that we are protecting those that cannot, in numbers, protect themselves. And thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you. Lisa Redinger.
Leave it with Mr. Kovak.
Leave it with Mr. Kovak. We'll make sure we get it.
Hi, my name is Lisa Redinger and I wish to share some-
Oh, this one? Can we double check it's on, Mr. Kovak? Is it on? Yeah.
There you go. Hi, my name is Lisa Redinger and I wish to share some concerns I have with allowing gender dysphoric students to compete in sporting events with students of the opposite sex. I passed out a picture of a biological male with gender dysphoria competing in a high school track event. You can see the very large and very well-developed muscles on this student. As you can also see, these girls who are competing with him don't have a chance in heck of even getting anywhere close to this student. How is that fair to them? No matter how hard they train, no matter how badly they want to win, no matter the huge sacrifices they are willing to make, they will never, ever be able to keep up. Why do we even have separate female and male sports? Because of the biological differences between male and females and our inherent sense of justice and fairness as humans. Girls and women are the ones being discriminated against. I want to quote a bit from an article. "Men have stronger bones than women, as well as stronger tendons and ligaments. Males have more muscle fibers and because of this have greater muscle mass. Men have about 40% more muscle mass than women. Men also have higher testosterone levels that allow a greater capacity for muscle growth. Because of this, a high T female is nowhere near the testosterone level of a low T male." Men are bathed in testosterone from birth. Higher testosterone allows men to endure greater amounts of recovery, of greater amounts of physical conditioning and they recover faster from physical strenuous activities. They can do all of this at much higher rates than women can.
You have one more minute.
Because of their weaker bone structure, women are more prone to injury. So the higher the level of athletic competition, the more women are at risk. Highly competitive girls and women who are competing against biological boys and men are more likely to push themselves in dangerous ways in a vain attempt to accomplish the impossible. In March of this year, New Zealand weightlifter Laurel Hubbard had a stunning performance. Laurel was born a male. This weightlifter had previously competed at very high levels in men's weightlifting. Unfortunately, Hubbard's performance met with, I'm sorry, so this weightlifter actually creamed one hands down this competition. So this is what some of the girls had to say. "We all deserve to be on an even playing field. It's difficult when you believe that you're not. Why are we even doing this sport?" Another person said, "Imagine training for this your whole life as a woman, only to have a known leader in men's weightlifting. Take your title."
That's the end of your time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Piker? Marty Piker? Oh, sorry, I didn't see you stand up.
So I'd just like to, hold on. Okay. So my take on this whole thing is making any provision whatsoever for this individual is a monumental mistake. Any provision whatsoever. It's, I find it moral, immoral, I find it unacceptable for making any provision. So I have three children in Palatine High School, two of which are girls. And to think that a boy would stand next to my daughter exposing his penis right in front of her, the thought is disgusting. So I think some of you folks in here are parents. How would you feel if some boy was exposing his penis to your daughter? What would you say? Okay. This whole litigation, this is frivolous litigation, it should be thrown out immediately. We need to put the kibosh on this ridiculous litigation that's being brought forth here. It's just, it makes no sense whatever, whatsoever. So as everybody knows, God created two, not three, and not something in between, just two. And the fact, a man is a man and a woman is a woman, just as sure as taxes and death are absolute certainties. A man is a man and a woman is a woman.
Sir, you have one more minute.
There are no differences. So I just want to let it be known, this whole thing stinks and I think the board should make any effort to put a kibosh on the whole thing, not to make any provisions, to work towards throwing this whole frivolous lawsuit out. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Zold, I have on here, Ms. Zold, Jen Zold, I have here that you want to yield time. We're not going to do that, if that's okay? You yielded both times, okay, thank you. Multiple sheets, I apologize. I think, okay, and then I have Mandy Logan.
Hello, I'm Mandy Logan. I'm a sophomore at Palatine High School and I would like to speak in regard to the Palatine bathroom and locker room policy. In my experience talking to students in my school, I have heard no students having issues with transgender students changing in the locker room matching their gender identity. If anything, my peers have expressed that it is surprising that it's even a problem. So it seems that students are not the ones judging or discriminating against transgender students. Gender identity is valid and in my opinion, anyone should be able to go into a locker room or bathroom matching their gender identity. Sometimes we need to think about the marginalized and speak up for them in order for them to be heard. Change is hard, but it needs to happen. Also, based on other speakers, I would like to clarify that from my experience in Palatine locker rooms, I have never once seen anyone get fully naked exposing themselves. Like you keep your underwear on or you don't even change your leggings, you put your gym shorts over. So that shouldn't be an issue, really. It's not overexposing. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our citizens appearances and presentations. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next portion of our business, which is the public hearing on the proposed 2017 tax levy. I have two motions. The first suggested motion is that the public hearing on the proposed 2017 tax levy of Township High School District 211 is now open.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on the proposed 2017 tax levy and did not sign on the blue speaker sheet? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see any. We do have Ms. Susan Isaac that would like to speak on the tax levy for signing up. Thank you for signing up.
Okay, thank you. I was a resident for 26 years in the district-
Speak into the mic.
I was a resident for 26 years in the District 211. Both my children attended school. They did very well here. There was an accommodation for my son going through lengthy testing. He did qualify for accommodation. We worked hand-in-hand with the teachers and counselors, anyone, just very proud to be a resident. I moved a year and a half ago because of the abuse of the taxation put on my family. I walked neighborhoods. I knock on doors for candidates, some to replace most of you here. People cried that they had to leave. They couldn't afford to live here. For my future, for my family's future, I left District 211 because of the radical abuses of taxation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this brings us to our second suggested motion, that the public hearing on the proposed 2017 tax levy of Township High School District 211 is now closed.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our consent agenda. I'd also like to take this in two motions because not all members were present on December 4th at the Joint Boards of Education Meeting at separate, a separate motion on the approval of the minutes of that meeting is recommended. The first suggested motion is that the consent agenda with the removal of the minutes of the Joint Boards of Education Meeting of December 4th, 2017 be approved.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Abstain.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mrs. Burke.
Aye.
The second suggested motion is that the minutes of the Joint Boards of Education Meeting of the December 4th, 2017 be approved as presented.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Abstain.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Abstain.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Abstain.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mrs. Burke.
Aye.
This brings us to our special reports. We have our Freedom of Information Act request for your information, any questions or comments? We have our 2017 Advanced Placement Honor Roll, questions, comments? We have our operating fund balance for the period ending of June 30th, 2017, questions or comments? We also have our property tax refund update, any questions or comments in regards to them? And we've also been given our Community Connection Newsletter, questions or comments? Next, brings us to our unfinished business with the adoption of the 2017 tax levy. There's a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the amount of $222,775,000 as the 2017 tax levy of Township High School District 211.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, something I'd like to add. I understand that I'm not going to sway anyone's vote tonight. I ask that you consider the $5 million realized in our Halloween variance report in addition to the $5 million we're adding with this action tonight. We set a strategic plan with a planned 1.7% annual increase. With our current market trends of the feds raising interest rates, unemployment rates declining, and consumer confidence increasing, we could find ourselves at the 5% levy cap in the near future. This admin- This administration has stated that their recommendations will always align with the maximum allowed by law. I implore this board to consider the community members that are underemployed, the community members with children that are on free and reduced lunches as we enter 2018. Please follow our dollars closely and consider the district needs versus the funds we are receiving. $5.2 million more dollars in revenue and budget requires the district to spend $1.73 million less for our reserves to reach our 33% goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board member have anything to share? Dr. Kates, you'd like to say something?
I do, if I may. For tonight, we bring you a recommendation to adopt the 2017 levy that will serve as a primary funding source for the 2018-2019 school year. For the first time in District 211 history, we have no debt. And I want to highlight how this is a direct benefit to the taxpayers of this community, particularly surrounding the levy. People are familiar with the tax cap, but they are not always familiar with the reality that the tax cap pertains only to the operating levy, which is one of two levy components in almost all school district levies, the operating levy and the debt service levy. While the operating levy is limited to an increase that cannot exceed the tax cap, the addition of a tax service levy can cause a total levy increase to exceed the tax cap. For the past 10 years, the Board of Education has provided relief to taxpayers by reducing the total levy amount. And we did this by using reserve funds to reduce or to pay the entire amount of the second levy category, the debt service levy. The total amount of property tax relief resulting from this 10-year strategy totals more than $33 million. Within this strategic plan, this board set a priority to pay our debt in full and to operate from a debt-free position. We are pleased to note that about two weeks ago, we achieved this noteworthy point in this district's history. As a direct benefit of becoming debt-free, our recommended levy consists only of the operating levy and frees the community from a second debt service levy. After a successive string of 10 years in a row of reducing property taxes through a debt service tax levy abatement, this year, this board has taken their relief to local taxpayers one step further by entirely removing the debt service levy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Nay.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Aye.
Mrs. Burke.
Aye.
Moving on to our new business, we have our 2016-2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report of the Board of Education Funds. Dr. Kates, would you like to introduce?
Sure, we're very pleased to have our primary auditor with us tonight. I'm going to have Mrs. Hummel introduce him from our auditing firm.
Thank you. I'm pleased to introduce to you tonight Mr. Mike Malat, who is the Senior Manager for the Board's accounting firm, Baker Tilly. Mike and several others from Baker Tilly are charged with preparing a comprehensive audit of the district's financial reports, as well as conduct single audits of several, or select federal programs annually. Tonight, Mr. Malat is here to present to you a summary of the firm's audit review. I would also like to take a brief minute to recognize the outstanding work of Controller Treasurer Barb Peterson, Accounting Supervisor Diane C. Sleck, and the entire accounting office. They continue to provide, excuse me, to prove their commitment to outstanding financial reporting, of which Mr. Malat will now provide a summary for you. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. Thank you, Board, for having me tonight to speak briefly on the audit. I want to reiterate what Lauren said. It's a pleasure working with Barb and Diane and the entire business office. It's the most professional group of people we work with at the school district level in Illinois, hands down, not even a question. So, it's something to be incredibly proud of, and I always want to make sure to commend them and thank them for all the hard work they do. We come in, we're a giant tornado, we, you know, kick, you know, turn stones over and ask a bunch of questions, and they still have to do their day-to-day job. And then we leave, and we leave the aftermath for them to finish up. And they do a great job. They really make everything a smooth, clean process every year. And we can't really do our job without them doing the fine job they do. So, I just want to thank them first and foremost. So, just a quick rundown of kind of what we did. In addition to the large Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which your office prepares, which is the only school district besides CPS that I know of that actually prepares their own financial report, usually it's outsourced to their audit firm. Again, another commendation to the quality and level of skill in your business office. Besides that, where we provide a clean, what's called an unmodified audit opinion, which is the highest level of comfort we can provide with the financial information there. We also complete extensive work around your federal programs, select few each year, which is called our single audit, for which we have continued to give a clean opinion on. And change those programs up every year. We always look at your largest program, then we rotate them and look at them, and really do a deep dive into them to ensure compliance with all the federal and state regulations surrounding them. We also do a separate work around the ICB grants, where we issue a separate report related to that, which provides additional comfort around those numbers. One of the other things we do, which I think is one of the more important things in letters to review, it's much shorter than the CAFR, is the communication letter. And that's a culmination, a number of required communications we make. It's basically a summary of kind of how we feel the audit went, and also a reminder of everybody's kind of what the responsibility is and what really goes on and what's happening during an audit. The scope of what we do, what our responsibilities are, what management's responsibility is, and also what the board's responsibility is. You know, we work for you, and we want to communicate directly to you anything that ever happened. And that letter is basically the sum result of everything that went down during the audit, and also what we expect to happen in future years. So, if you want some light reading, there's some talk about nice audit standards that might make you fall asleep. But generally speaking, there's a lot of kind of good information as to how well the audit went. And if that's the place to go to, if you want to see our kind of picture of how the audit went. Yeah, nothing significantly crazy happened this year. We had no findings in our reviews of your controls, which is again a commendation. We most often always find issues. That's, we're good at that. So, the fact that we provide no significant risks identified within your major control process is something to be proud of, and something that the business office continues to work at a daily basis. We have conversation all the time about way to do things better, which, again, on the forefront of things, trying to address things as quickly as possible. One of the last things to mention is with the state AFR filing, they do a calculation of your financial profile and health. And the district, once again, I don't think you've ever not obtained this, but it's a perfect 4.0 score, which is the highest level of recognition you can get. So, again, something to commend and just to point out. I won't go into any details on numbers, because I'm sure if you've had time to read it, if you wanted to, or Barb will have informed you of some of the information there. But if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Any questions? Thank you very much for obviously working with us and doing the report, and just coming here this evening and presenting it to us. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
The suggested motion is that the Board of Education acknowledge receipt of the June 30th, 2017 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which includes the financial statements as prepared by Township High School District 211 and audited by Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus, LLP Certified Public Accountants.
So moved. Second.
Any more discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mrs. Burke.
Aye.
You also have been given the 2016-2017 Popular Annual Financial Report of the Board of Education Funds. Any questions or comments?
Just to note, this is our first year of using this communication tool. It connects both the educational components along with the financial components. So, we are pleased, I do want to recognize the work of the business office to do this first product and to make it a user-friendly way of commuting our efforts on the educational front and then the financial backup in terms of how we're able to fund those events occurring. Thank you to the business office and for the board, including this within the strategic plan.
Thank you. Next item of business is our resolution authorizing additional employer contributions to the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing an additional employer contribution to Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund in the amount of $2,500,000 to be made before December 31st, 2017.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Hinshaw. Mr. Hinshaw, excuse me.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mrs. Burke.
Aye.
We have been given our student user fee introduction. This is for information, any questions or comments?
I do. I think as we go forward with this, I really like us to keep in mind the number of students that we have on free and reduced, how much we waive, and also keep in mind that there's a number of students that, you know, are paying the full price on some of these things, especially the driver's ed. And I'm just kind of hoping that we really don't start looking at raising things too much, because that's the group that's right in the middle that doesn't get all of these different benefits that I think we have to be aware of, because we just can't keep putting onto them to pick up some of the costs that are waived for others. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
Was part of the last legislation that there's driver's ed relief, or is that still in flux?
There is what they described as mandate relief. And we have talked to our various authorities, if you will, to find out exactly what that is. And we will be bringing some ideas about that. Just as a point of reference, this board last year did seek the expansion of the waiver amount from 350 to 400. And that was cleared.
But, and then additionally, would we be required to maintain a certain staff level for driver education instructors with this relief? Or is this something where we could potentially reduce and accommodate that on an as-needed basis instead of having a mandatory staff to accommodate anybody that may come along?
That is the heart of the question, and we continue to seek definitive answers. What I will say is that the new law has not been fully regulated. So, districts are trying to answer that exact question. We are working closely with our people to try to answer that question. I would want to give you a firm, hard answer, but only when I'm confident in that definitive answer.
So, then the options would be reducing staff, maintaining staff, or outsourcing, correct?
Yes.
Is that the administration's due diligence in this process?
Yeah, that is our analysis. All of those components are being examined, yes.
Okay, against our fees, then, obviously, as part of this recommendation as well, right?
I'm not sure what you mean against our fees, but in association with our fees.
Right, whether we're at 400 or a little bit less, like Ms. Klimkowitz may be suggesting.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, for clarity, the paperwork that we did, we are cleared for $400 of driver's ed waiver for when we come together next month.
Yeah, so the board sought approval to raise the amount, did not adopt that amount yet, but has authority to do so from the state government.
Outside of driver's ed, last year, we did do a pretty, we look at these fees every year, and it's typically a two-month conversation. And next month, it's clearly probably going to come back with a recommendation. I think I, too, would like to see that we, you know, monitor our costs and not raise the fees, if possible. Outside of driver's ed, I feel differently about that. But we did take a good examine at it last year, and I thought we got landed at a good point. And I'd like to, you know, try not to continuously raise fees every year. Thank you. Anyone else? This brings us to our bid for consideration for buses. There's a suggested motion that the Board of Education award the business for buses for Transportation Department to the lowest responsible bidder, Central State's Bus Sales in the amount of $2,104,173.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, we have the infrastructure in place to fuel these buses, or we have to fuel them remotely until we get the infrastructure in place? Because I haven't seen anything come across the board documents saying that we've expended any type of capital to put the infrastructure in for the fuel of gas, natural gas buses?
Yep.
We, that is correct. We have a few different options with regard to the propane buses. We would be able to fuel those off-site. There are several area, local options in our communities. Or we have what is called wet fueling, where they would come on-site and be able to fuel those for us. With regard to the gasoline, which is the alternative fuel source for all of our special ed buses that we are recommending, those, we do have the infrastructure in place at two of our schools currently.
And the analysis is that we received and the numbers we received prior to the bid on this had all those components factored in in the expense of the buses, correct?
So, we're voting to buy the buses, but we haven't decided how we're going to fuel these buses yet. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, we have not, no, it's not that we haven't decided how we're going to fuel them. We haven't decided where and how the fueling station is going to be implemented on our grounds.
So, we're committed to putting a fueling station on our grounds? And is that what you're saying?
That's exactly what we're examining, yes. Where and what is going to be the best way for us to do that? And when we know we have local fueling stations, that partnership may turn out to be a better option for us than to put them on our grounds. Most of the facilities we have are immediately on our grounds and are for efficiency's sake.
Okay, so is it, okay, my concern is that we buy these buses, and the fuel costs are going to, like, become double what we would pay with traditional buses. And I just wanted to make sure that we've done our due diligence to control the cost and to find the most efficient way to control those costs, whether it's a facility on-site or whether it's remote fueling. I just haven't seen anything to justify, you know, the ongoing cost of fuel here.
Again, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that I understood that in our report when we were doing the analysis of the different types of fueling of buses, that the fuel and the fuel types was built into the overall cost and expense to the district and where they're maximizing our savings. The physical of the how-to is what you're saying you haven't decided, but you're within those margins that we originally discussed, correct?
See, that report, when I read it, I read it as it's a cleaner burning fuel for the environment, and that we were going to get a rebate on the purchase of the natural gas bus, but it wasn't going to cover the cost differential. That was what I came out of that report when I read it.
Could you clarify for us which way?
Sure. The current cost of fuel is about 90 cents cheaper per gallon for propane versus that of diesel. We are, as Dr. Kate shared, looking at what our best option is. And as of now, are considering, because we do not have the infrastructure in place, are considering these other two options. However, we are very closely looking at some considerations for the potential of having a propane station on our grounds as well, and we'll continue to weigh those options. But with the pricing that we have right now, we know that it is a much more affordable fuel. And as you shared, it is also a greener product, as well as a, it provides us several benefits to our fleet through the winter months, which is always a positive feature as well.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
Mrs. Burke.
Aye.
Next, we have board member expenses. Suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the preapproval form for future expense reimbursements for Robert Lefever to attend the annual EdRed legislative dinner meeting on January 29th, 2018, and Anna Klimkowitz to attend the national conference in San Antonio, Texas, April 6th through April 9th, 2018, as submitted.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Member roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. Lefever. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Next, we have our potential topics for future discussion. Does anyone have a topic that they would like to bring up?
I, I do. I was at an Alliance breakfast this morning, a legislative breakfast, and it was with the Alliance to End Homelessness. And they were talking about House Bill 261 and that deals with homeless students. I do, did bring back some information that I will distribute to you and then maybe we can talk about it in January and see if this is a topic that we may want to discuss a little bit further here at the board.
Is there any objection to bringing this discussion up in January on the January agenda?
Could you clarify to what end? Are we just talking about homelessness or is there a goal to a discussion?
House Bill 261.
It's House Bill 261, so maybe when we come to potential topics, I can bring it up at the January meeting because I have some information that I'll distribute to you. And then in January, we can see if it's something that we should be talking about a little bit more, and we probably should.
Are we looking at a policy for this or?
It's, it's a House bill that's currently-
Being debated, I mean, what, what is it that we would do at the board level that I couldn't do by just visiting my legislator one-on-one, my House representative?
I think because of what they're asking the schools to do in regards to the homeless students, I think that's, it's going to affect each and every school district and there's some financial implications. And I'd like to share the information with you and maybe in January, talk a little bit more and see if that is a topic that we really need to discuss a little bit further.
To garner either support or opposition to the bill, correct?
I think to make us aware of House Bill 261 and to bring forth more information in regards to it and maybe even taking a look at this possibly being a resolution for the IASB going forward. But I'd like to get the information to you because I just attended this meeting this morning and it was through my employment, you know, being in a nonprofit agency with, dealing with homeless people.
I have no objection.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is anyone else? Okay. Okay, this will, this will bring us to our special report. Mrs. Klimkowitz with NSSEO?
Okay. With NSSEO, we did have our spotlight on the NSSEO stars. We had the deaf and hard of hearing. Some of the students participated in the academic bowl that was over at Harper and our students came in first place. We had a young lady that, her name is Megan, and she is one of the District 211 students. So the kids were very, very excited about this. They shared their experience with us and they will be going on to the Midwest Regional Deaf Academy Bowl, Academic Bowl competition, which is in February, and it's at the Iowa School for the Deaf. So they're very excited about that. Going along with that, there is a, a movie called Hetty and Heidi, The Lost Sisters. And this is about, it's a promotion by the deaf students. And the movie is captioned and has sound, so they'll be signing, but the captions will be, the language will be on the bottom for, for us who do not sign, be able to read that. So, and that's going to be Saturday, January 20th at Hersi High School. We also took a look at having a, a construction manager for the addition over at Timber Ridge and they interviewed several different firms. The firm that was, was chosen is Nicholas and Associates. And I know there's a number of schools that have worked with them. So that's a very positive thing because this is the first time that NSSEO is taking on such a major building and then this person is the one that will over, truly oversee that without having any connection to the construction firm, so. And lastly, we will be getting some unreserved fund balances that will be coming back to District 211. And basically, it's funds that, you know, we've paid for, in some cases, we didn't expend everything. And there's also funding that came in from what the non-member districts pay. So I think that's it then. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dombrowski and EdRed?
Yes, I am basically taking information, neither myself nor Ms. Homel were able to attend the EdRed meeting. Ms. Peterson attended. Thank you very much for these notes. And the comments that we got was Senate Bill 863, an attempt to help with teacher shortages in Illinois by offering the different requirements for licensing. We've heard that before. Senate Bill 402, state sexual harassment policy, which extends to school districts. We should review our policy and make sure we're in compliance with the bill by January of 2018. EdRed position was that most district policies were more strict than the bill, but it would benefit us to do a review. Senate Bill 851, property tax freeze. It is recommended that all districts continue to stay diligent. Some discussions whether districts would be willing to accept the freeze and reduction from Senate Bill 1947. The consensus was no. EdRed is working to get more information on that. They're also going to address what's going on at the federal level that might impact that bill. And again, we've seen a lot with property tax deductions at the federal level, so that's the impact that they're talking about. And no parody for PTEL with this bill. Spring bills, House Bill 4167, student teaching requirements, House Bill 2964, TIF reform. If we have any comments on TIF reform, we're supposed to get those to Karen. House Bill 4132, PTEL base adjustments for abatement. No details were provided yet. And I think that pretty much sums up the key points, so I think we'll pass this over if you want to add that in minutes. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Dr. Kate, is there anything you want to add in regards to EdRed?
That's spot on.
Partners for our community, Mr. Kovak, do you have anything?
I believe you were able to attend this last meeting, correct?
Yes, I was, and it was a busy meeting. There was a lot of information shared, but I don't want to say we really moved heavily on anything. It's an interesting, it was my first meeting that I attended. I just finally got on the circuit. But it is, what makes it interesting is there's so many champions of our community at the table and the work that each of these organizations bring for the benefit of our communities is unbelievable. And that was my major takeaway as we lead into the holiday season, and so we meet again in January. And that will bring us to Mr. Rosenbloom and the Illinois Associate of School Boards.
Thank you. We had District 211 representatives in attendance at the Illinois Association of School Boards, superintendents, and school administrators conference held last month here in Chicago. This was an excellent opportunity for those of us who attended to network with other school professionals, board members, and service providers from across the state of Illinois, while also learning and participating in sessions covering a variety of topics and happenings in our state and at the national level. I found this especially enlightening to learn the great diversity that we have across Illinois opposed to just in our, in our remote, very, very close community here that we serve. I was very excited to attend the III conference with others from District 211 as well as from our neighboring school districts. During the conference, representatives from 367 school boards considered resolutions on a variety of public education issues at the Illinois Association of School Boards' Annual Delegate Assembly. I was very honored to represent and vote on behalf of this school district during this school years, during this year's delegate assembly. In addition to setting and voting on some legislative priorities, the IASB delegates also elected a new president and vice president for the Illinois Association of School Boards. Joanne Osmond, a member of the Lake Villa CCSD 41 Board of Education, was elected as the association's new president, replacing Phil Pritzker. Phil is a member of the Wheeling CCSD 21 School Board from our very own North Cook Division of the IASB. And Thomas Neely, a member of the Morton CUSD 709 Board of Education, was elected as IASB's new vice president. Thomas was the association's treasurer for the past two years. It was a very, very exciting celebration and honor to be present for their election and selection. These and other items coming out of the delegate assembly are or will soon be available for public viewing on the IASB website. I would like to take a moment and thank my fellow board member, Anna Klimkowitz, for representing the North Cook Division on the 2017 Resolutions Committee. Anna has and continues to represent our district with the highest levels of professionalism and integrity at the local, district, and state levels. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. There is several announcements for your review. The next item of business is entering closed session. There's a suggested motion that the Board of Education enter closed session to discuss minutes of the meeting lawfully closed under the Open Meeting Act, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employee, matter relating to an individual student, setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives, and probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Suggested motion that the Board of Education return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
You guys can have, okay. Any discussion? Roll call, Anna?
All right, Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Setting of price for sale or lease of property. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education adopt the resolution as presented, authorizing the sale of the district's 60-plus acre property on the terms and conditions attached to and incorporated into this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any, oops, any discussion? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Appointment, employment, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, acceptance of retirement requests of non-certified staff members. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement request of Lucia Fausto effective June 2019, according to the master contract of the District 21 United Support Staff, Craig Hipson-Steele effective June 2020, according to the master contract of District 21 United Support Staff, Yvette Jones effective May 2021, according to the master contract of District 21 Teachers Union, and Catherine Wold effective May 2018, according to the master contract of the District 21's United Support Staff.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Suggested motion that the Board of Education terminate the employment of bus driver Nancy Fallon effective December 14th, 2017. Further, that the board secretary notify Nancy Fallon of the termination by certified mail.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LeFever?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Hinshaw?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Burke?
Aye.
Any meeting recap?
There was something that Ms. Klimkowitz was-
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you for reminding me. It was in regards to conversations that we have with our, our member districts in regards to students coming in. In the past, Districts 15 and 54 used to belong to NSSEO and receive those supportive services. And I was wondering, they withdrew several years ago and it might be a little bit more than that. So they've had their own self-contained classes for therapeutic day school and so on. I'm just wondering if maybe the district could take a look at, and I don't know how to properly say this, but, you know, have behaviorals, the behavior of students, has it changed? Has it improved with the self-contained being at the local district as opposed to using NSSEO? Because they haven't used NSSEO since, since they left. And NSSEO does provide quite a bit of therapeutic services for, you know, our member districts.